The meeting, regular meeting of Lake Lure Town Council, June fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. And Steve, I have to ask permission, can we start a meeting without Blaine Cox?
Well, excuse me, yes, sir, yes, Mr. Mayor, you may. I spoke with Mr. Cox yesterday, and he told me he would not be here, and he did give me his permission directly to proceed without him.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to inform you.
All right, good. I guess we will start it without Chris Callahan, our attorney, maybe he got a scheduling problem along the way.
He may, he may still be on leave.
Okay. Would you all please rise for an invocation and pledge allegiance in place? If you all please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful day. Thank you for this gathering of people, and may it be used to the best interest of the town of Lake Lure, and, and please give us all your blessings as we go forward with these decisions. We ask these things in thy name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We can look for it, for first of all, for the approval of the agenda, and there's about sixteen different agendas, I think.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of changes here. Under public hearing, or under item six and item seven, where it says sixteen dash zero six zero nine, I believe it should say zero nine dash fourteen, is that correct, Andy?
Zero six dash fourteen, what's supposed to be?
Sixteen dash zero six dash fourteen, correct, on both of those, because that is the actual ordinance on the budget. Under item eight, where it has public hearing, it only mentions one issue, which is the proposed ordinance under chapter eighty-four. That public hearing is actually to discuss two items, the proposed ordinance and the repeal of the old ordinance. The proposed ordinance is a replacement for the one we're attempting to repeal, just so the public knows that. And then item nine is, is corrected, deals with both.
Okay. Okay, are there any other additions or corrections?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yes, one addition, and that is discussion on authorization for a new police officer. We have received the resignation of one officer, so we need to put that as number fifteen E, and then make our closed session fifteen F.
Okay, fifteen E is the new police officer. Okay, and F will be the closed session. Okay, with those changes, do I hear a motion to accept the agenda as modified?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Bob, we'll hear a second, a second by Mary Ann, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, public hearing on proposed ordinance number sixteen dash six dash fourteen regarding the town budget for fiscal year two thousand sixteen seventeen.
Well, don't we have the presentation and the message first, Mr. Mayor, number five first?
Oh, sorry, I skipped right through. I was trying to make your fifteen minute deadline.
My deadline.
Oh, your deadline, okay, so the presentation of the town budget and budget message for, from our interim town manager, Sam Carr.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And so I'll, I'll give the, the budget message, and then we'll entertain questions for the public hearing, is that, okay.
Sure.
I've got, we've got copies of the budget ordinance up here, if anybody wants to look at it, I also have some extra copies, if anybody wants to look at it. Also, we've got the, the budget message on the website, Valerie's posted that on the website. I'll give an overview tonight, but I'm not going to read, it's about twelve, thirteen pages, so just give you a brief overview of it, and then you can look on the, the website, the actual details, because there's some really good stuff in there, so. So I said I won't read it, I'm going to start out by reading it, so. In accordance to section one fifty-nine dash eleven, one fifty-nine dash twelve at all, all of the, all of the general statutes of North Carolina, it is my duty to submit for your consideration a proposed balanced budget for fiscal year two thousand sixteen seventeen. This budget is based on a careful analysis of departmental operating budgets, capital proven plans, and prior, and prioritized needs as identified by department heads and in conversations with town commissioners. In summary, the budget is balanced at the recommended tax rate of point two seven six per one hundred dollar property value, a rate unchanged from last year. So basically, it's no new additional taxes this year. And kind of give you an overview of, of the budget ordinance, we have three operating funds, we have a water and sewer fund, which kind of operates as a little business, self-supporting fund, we have a hydroelectric fund that generates power that we sell to Duke Power, and they have expenses, and then the, the catch-all fund that we have is the general fund, which is basically all, everything else, the public services, the fire, the police, administration, public works, the lake, everything's fit in there. Looking at the general fund and looking at the revenues, the main source of revenues in the general fund is ad valorem taxes, that is a, a function of the county to assess value in Lake Lure. Their assessment came back at around roughly two percent increase in property values, but most of that had been personal property values that went up considerably. I don't know what that means, if less, people are buying more boats or something like that, but another source of revenue in the general fund is state share revenues, which is sales tax, there is a utility franchise tax that they tax utilities, that went up eight percent, so that the state is expecting some growth there. We also have beach tours, marina, the lake, that, all those fees went up about fifteen percent, just because we're showing more people in town, there's, there's a trend of tourists, so we're, we're showing a historical trend of, of about fifteen percent increases. The facility rentals, the land use fees, like zoning permits, have stayed the same, we didn't increase any of those fees. You also see a transfer from the hydroelectric fund of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Last couple of years, we've had surpluses in the hydroelectric plant, and, which is good, but anytime we have surpluses there, we, we try to fund the, the silt removal process of, which is a general fund expense, make more money through the hydro, usually more rain, it brings on more silt, so there's rationale to, to transfer a hundred and fifty thousand from the hydroelectric surpluses to help pay for silt. And water and sewer, we raised rates this year, we're not proposing to raise any more rates next year, basically, we're going to try to squirrel some of that money for the, the big green line project. And then, as I mentioned, we had surpluses this year in the hydroelectric fund, in fact, we're looking at maybe some records as far as the hydro generation revenues go. We have one more check at the end of this month, and it looks like we'll push, push over seven hundred thousand dollars in, in revenues in the hydroelectric plant. Going back to the general fund and going back to expenditures, our operational departments have basically stayed the same, we had a increase in health insurance of about five percent, there was a, a rate increase in our utilities expense, about two percent, but all in all, our operational departments have kind of flat, stayed flat as far as the expense parts. The major expense of the general fund is infrastructure expenses, capital items and, and capital projects. The main, the main expense of that is three hundred thousand dollars for silt removal. We had eighty-two thousand for parking lot and repaving, approximately seventy thousand toward our public stretch, which is a direct reimbursement from a power bill grant that we get, so we don't use any tax money on those. Also, in, in, on schedule, we have two police car replacements, a fire pickup truck, in the fire, a pickup truck in the fire department, a printer and scanner in the community development, refurbished the, the main beach house, a dump truck replacement for the public works department, they're present, presently, their, their dump truck, I think, is an eighty-three or an eighty-six, so it's approximately thirty, over thirty years old, so that needs to be replaced. Police vehicle cameras, and there's two placeholders in there for about approximately a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the community development department is to replace, or actually to install a sidewalk from the ABC store up to the strip store mall up there. That's at thirty thousand, and then ninety thousand for a sidewalk from Boys Camp Road up toward Chimney Rock Village. We didn't have any capital expenditures in the water sewer fund, we're just waiting for the big project for, for next year for the green line. The hydroelectric fund, one of the problems with, with generating so much money or revenues in the last couple of years, it's, it's put a strain on the plant, so our surplus for the hydroelectric plant, we're kind of trying to invest in, in the capital items at the plant, some of the things, rehab the butterfly valves, replace the bearings on the small generator, replace the bearings on the large generator, calibrate the control panels, wiring the basement, a generator, and one of the things that we have to do periodically is, that the state requires, and an insurance it requires, is to do a dam inspection, and that's around eighteen thousand dollars, I guess there's a liability there that, that we need to do anyways, but those are the main capital expenditures on the budget, it, it's one of the, the most investments we've, we've done in the last few years. Let's see, I just want to go back to the, the property tax, our twenty-seven point six breakdown comes to sixteen point four three in municipal tax, and eight point one seven cents on the fire tax, and then our three cents on the capital improvements, which comes to twenty-seven point six. Rutherford County is almost sixty-one cents, so for the Lake Lure taxpayer, thirty percent, thirty-two percent of their property tax bill supports the Lake Lure budget, and sixty-eight percent goes to the Rutherford County budget. And let me just finish up with, while this budget does not address every need, want, preference, desire, project program, or requested capital item, it will provide the continuation of municipal services currently provided and at the level expected by our residents, while ensuring that we are maintaining the assets we have and making significant strategic investments in the community.
Very good, Sam. The, the public should know that we spent quite a bit of time in a work session going through and adjusting and making, so this has been looked at us, obviously, you haven't seen all the numbers, but staff did a really wonderful job putting this all together and balancing the budget and not increasing taxes, so we, we applaud them. Every department came in looking to have their knees cut off, and they all walked out smiling, so it was, it was a very productive day. Relative to that, it's a good presentation, and anything else, any other questions for Sam?
Yeah, I have, I have one question, something I might not have noticed before, it may just be the way it's being said, is on page five here, where you're talking about the one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar withdrawal from the capital reserve fund, what is that withdrawal for?
That's for the earmark for the capital projects that we have, we're, the three percent from a revenue standpoint comes out to about two hundred and fifty-five thousand, so we're transferring about two hundred and fifty-five thousand out, and then we're, we're bringing a hundred and eighty-one thousand back in to help pay for those capital items.
Okay, so that three cents of the ad valorem tax still goes to nothing but capital improvement and infrastructure?
That's earmarked, that's correct.
Okay, got it, okay, got it, all right, thank you.
And we're still building that fund.
Got it, appreciate that, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council? Okay, and with that being said, now we'll try to, number six, which is the public hearing proposed, proposed ordinance number sixteen dash six dash fourteen regarding the town budget for fiscal year two thousand sixteen seventeen. Nobody has signed up to speak in this public hearing, would anybody, now that they've heard some things, like to ask a question, or seeing nobody standing, raising a hand, whatever, we'll, we can move on. Okay, moving on to item number seven, consider adoption of ordinance number sixteen dash six dash fourteen regarding the town budget for the fiscal year two thousand sixteen seventeen.
Mr. Mayor? I'd, I'd like to say to the public that this is a very solid budget, again, no tax increase, and we were still able to find a two percent cost of living allowance increase for our staff, which is well-earned, they have really been tasked and overtasked this past year, and I, I think it's a very solid budget, and I support it wholeheartedly.
Okay, anybody else? You want to turn that into a motion, Steve?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that an ordinance, that ordinance number sixteen dash zero six dash one four, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget for the town of Lake Lure, North Carolina, be approved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mary Ann, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So unanimous, very good, big step. Okay, number, item number eight, public hearing, proposed ordinance number sixteen dash six fourteen A, an ordinance amending chapter eighty-four miscellaneous offenses of the code of ordinances of the town of Lake Lure regarding the possession of firearms carrying openly or concealed in certain municipal property, and this also includes, includes the repeal of the old ordinance. Nobody signed up for the public hearing, has anybody moved to come forward? If not, we'll move on to item number nine.
Well, Tyrone, I believe.
Excuse me, I didn't, Tyrone, I didn't see your hand. You're usually not that shy.
Again, Mr. Mayor, if I may state, we are considering the repeal of an old ordinance and replacing it with a different one, and, and that makes more sense, yes.
Yes, I'm Tyrone Phillips, and that was my question, what is the old ordinance and what is the new ordinance consideration, because I haven't had a chance to read that.
We want, well, I'm going to address that during the discussion part and, and explain it fully.
Okay, and if I have some questions, could I come back up about that?
I, I think in, under the circumstance, I think that'd be okay.
Or I can answer that question right now, either way.
We all want to know it.
Okay, I, I don't mind addressing it now, Mr., go ahead.
Well, I, like I said, I haven't had a chance to read the proposed old ordinance and the new ordinance, the changes and, and what's going on, I'd like to have an explanation of that.
Come back up after, after Steve.
Yeah, no problem.
I think you'll like it, Tyrone.
Yeah, I think, I think you'll be satisfied with it and probably have no questions.
Okay, moving on to item number nine, consider repeal of the ordinance permitting and posting of signs prohibiting carrying of concealed weapons in certain municipal property, and consider adoption of ordinance number sixteen dash six fourteen A, an ordinance amending chapter eighty-four miscellaneous offenses of code of ordinances of the town of Lake Lure regarding the possession of firearms carried openly or concealed on certain municipal property. With that, Steve, why don't we?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you, yeah, this is an initiative I put forth, so I appreciate the opportunity to speak first on it. In nineteen ninety-five, when the General Assembly of North Carolina authorized the carrying of concealed weapons with permits, the council at that time, prior to the effective date of that general statute, enacted an ordinance that basically prohibited the carrying of concealed weapons on all town property. They named everything that the town owned, including parking areas, grassy areas, parks, beach, everything, but that ordinance also required the posting of conspicuous signage, similar to the stickers you have on the door, but you would have to have a sign at the entrance of every parking lot, at the entrance of every door, or every door to every building, in order to fully implement that ordinance and for it to be enforceable by our law enforcement people. Right now, that has never been done. Also, if those signs were actually posted today, it would have a definite impact on tourism. Anybody coming to this town would look at all of those signs and say, gee, does this town have a gun problem? I mean, literally, so it, it, it doesn't make sense, there was, there was no discussion on record that I could find, and I did a lot of research and found our first gun ordinance goes all the way back to May of nineteen thirty-nine, all right, but I could not find anything that discussed the impact of this ordinance, or, or the common sense approach to why a certain area was named as being prohibited from carrying a concealed weapon with a permit. Since the, since the original statute in nineteen ninety-five, that ordinance, the, the general statute, has been modified, revised several times, our ordinance has not ever been updated. Much has been done by the state to allow the carry of concealed weapons in vehicles and parking lots where previously prohibited. Our ordinance prohibits even carrying it into the parking lot, but the state now allows, even like at the school, for example, if you drive onto school property with a concealed weapon on your person or in your car, you're not breaking the law as long as you leave that weapon in the car in a covered or locked compartment. That's now allowed. Our ordinance prohibits it in all parking areas, doesn't make sense, somebody drives in from South Carolina with a permit that is recognized by the state of North Carolina, they technically could not enter the parking lot if we had the sign out there. Now, a municipality is well within its right to prohibit concealed weapons in, or, in municipal buildings and on municipal property. I'm not necessarily opposed to doing this when it's justified. There is no record of why certain town properties were identified in the old ordinance. The state law allows the carry of concealed handguns in state parks, yet in some of our park areas, there's signs that mention firearms that do not specifically say they're prohibited in the conspicuous manner required by the ordinance. A good example is right over here at this playground, it, it says, this is a place of peace, leave your firearms at home, it sounds more like a suggestion as to a stated conspicuous prohibition, it's in very small print at the very bottom of the sign. Now, many people feel that an ordinance such as the one I'm recommending be repealed enhances the safety of the public, I believe that actually creates a false sense of security. When we're speaking about the carrying of concealed handguns, we are referring to people that have passed the training, the test, and the background investigation for a permit, they have proven themselves to be trustworthy and respectful of the law, and competent in the handling of guns. Ordinances like ours and no-gun stickers simply preclude, preclude law-abiding citizens from exercising their right and, and doing what state law permits them to legally do. Those same ordinances and stickers will never stop a criminal with the intent of doing harm, no matter what we do in the way of an ordinance, no matter what we say or how we say it, it'll never stop somebody bent on doing harm. Should a need and justification exist, and I believe it does, replacing this ordinance with one that applies more common sense in the approach is an option, and that option is one I'm also trying to exercise tonight with the creation and adoption of, of the amendment to chapter eighty-four. The chapter eighty-four ordinance essentially, it does, it does two things, it prohibits totally the possession, the possession of firearms carried openly or concealed in the Lake Lure Police Department, which is already prohibited by law, and the ABC store, and those are the only two places that are named, and, and the only people that can carry in those two places are law enforcement officers, or folks who are exempt under article fifty-four of the law. The next paragraph says, the possession of firearms carried openly or concealed is hereby prohibited within the following municipal buildings, and it lists town hall and lake operations, and I'll explain why in a minute, but the paragraph goes on to say, this shall not apply to a person who is legally carrying a concealed handgun and has a concealed handgun permit that is valid under the general statute, chapter fourteen, article fifty-four B, or who is exempt from obtaining a permit, like our law enforcement officers, pursuant to that article. Open carry is still prohibited, okay, and that's what it says. So essentially, even though the stickers will remain on the doors, if you have a valid concealed carry permit, you can carry here, you can carry in lake operations, if you have a valid permit, you cannot open carry in those locations, and that's what this ordinance does. And it also goes on to say that decals or signs shall not be posted at our own municipal properties not identified herein, and I had one suggestion for an amendment, or where no prohibitions exist, and that's what the new ordinance does. Short, sweet, and simple, justification for these two locations, town hall and lake operations, those are the two properties where citizens of the public are most likely to become frustrated in dealings with the town. You come in here to get a building permit, you find out you can't, you find out you have to do this in order to get the permit, you come in to get a boat permit, you find out you don't have the right documents, you've got to go all the way back home, you might get frustrated, you, you go into lake operations for a lake structure permit, same possibility, that's why those two are, are named as the two areas that are prohibited unless you have a concealed carry permit, and, and that, in essence, is the ordinance. Therefore, subject to discussion and possible amendment, I make the following motion. I move that an ordinance permitting the posting of signs prohibiting the carrying of concealed weapons on certain municipal property, adopted during the November fourteen nineteen ninety-five regular council meeting, be repealed effective immediately. Further, I move that an ordinance amending chapter eighty-four miscellaneous offenses of the code of ordinances regarding the possession of firearms carried openly or concealed on certain municipal property be adopted.
Do we hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Bob, okay, let's have some discussion.
Okay, I, I don't mind starting now, Stephen and I have talked about this for, I guess, over a year now, and I support it, I support it fully, I think it makes sense, as we look at where we've had some of our tragedies that have involved guns in the last few years, they've all been in places where guns were not allowed, and a person who is intent on doing someone harm with a gun is not going to be deterred by a rule that says you can't have a gun there. So I feel, I feel least comfortable when I'm in a movie theater So I feel least comfortable when I'm in a movie theater or someplace like that where I know that the only people in there with guns are going to be people who are breaking the law to begin with. And I really, I'm ready to go to movies anymore. But I think this makes sense. It's in our constitution. We have a right to keep and bear arms, and I fully support it. So that's my input.
Marion or Bob?
I'm the same way. Of course, I've had no guns since I was a kid, but basically, it's exactly the truth. It's just like these people in Orlando. I think back, if one person had a concealed carry in that area, he could, and he only saved one life, he could have saved one. But when you get in there and somebody else walks through a door and have the AR-15s and these semi-automatic weapons, you don't have very much time to respond because you got two choices. You can hide and wait and hopefully he doesn't shoot you, or you can respond and pull and fire. But I just, I'm a firm believer that, especially with the way this ordinance is written, if you've got concealed carry, you've gone through the qualifications. I mean, they fingerprint you and check you with every agency in the country. And, you know, you talk to someone like an officer, when he stops you, and officers I've talked to, if you've got a concealed carry permit, it shows up already whenever they pull up your license, they know that you're a law-abiding citizen. You get up there, and any signage is not. These people are cowards, and the rest of them are mentally off in their heads. You know, mental treatment's what these people need. It's just like the guy in Orlando had been interviewed or checked out twice for comments he'd made by the FBI. Well, their hands are limited, too. You can only do so much of a search and question and such. So they had to let him go. It's not their fault. The laws protect that guy that's crazy as well as what we call ourselves sane. So I'm strongly in support of it, always have been, and I just, the places you have to fear are the ones you can't defend yourself. I want, even if I'm taken out, I want at least the opportunity to protect myself. And I think you citizens deserve the same right.
Marion?
I don't carry a gun, and I don't want to, but these fellows sitting back here who have one, if somebody comes in and decides to mow us down, I'm thankful that they're here and they have it.
And if I may, my comment there is that if you are a criminal, and we appreciate the police, and we respect them, and we support them, however, if you're a criminal, who do you think the first person they're taking out is? Right there. I mean, because that's your only one obstacle, is one wearing a uniform. If you get him out...
Let me add one thing. Let me add one thing. The police, as good as they are, can't be everywhere all the time. And obviously, there's been a lot of discussion of this on the news the past couple of days, and I heard just today, if I don't remember the fellow's name, he was either a coroner or former member of the House of Representatives in Texas, said that you get into the gallery in Texas quicker if you have a concealed carry in or carrying. You don't have to go through the metal detector, you go on a different line, you show them your concealed carry, and you're ushered right on in. So what we're talking about here is not really unprecedented.
All of us that have them have thoroughly checked out.
Our attorney's jumping at the bit.
Well, I had a discussion with the chief about this, and I only have one issue with it. I have a problem with ordinance. The issue is, under state law, the concealed weapons permit, you can't carry in law enforcement center anyway.
Right.
So when you put Lakelure Police Department, you'd have to do that anyway, or even if you left it out, it would be prohibited because it is under state statute. The problem is, is this is all kind of one building, defining where the boundaries of each area technically might be. Now, I have some strong recollection that when they built this building, either on the official plats or somewhere, they actually designated that wall and that part on the other side of it, the Lakelure Police Department, and that door stays locked during the day, I understand.
It's two separate addresses.
Right. But we can't find the ordinance. We can't find any designation in the minutes in the past. So, two ways to fix this, to me, because I could see there being an issue that somebody walks in here and somebody says, well, this is the police department, too, or this is the law enforcement agency.
Right.
So, two ways of doing it. One is, you could add to B, B1, and B1, the Lakelure Police Department and the Lakelure Town Hall located in Memorial Highway, and therefore add the Town Hall section to that section under B, along with the ABC store and that. Then it wouldn't be an issue. Or, you could define it better by saying, B1, the Lakelure Police Department located on Memorial Highway, Lakelure, which is hereby more particularly described on the attached Exhibit A marked in blue boundaries or something, and attach to this a sort of a picture, you know, drawing of the building with the police department kind of boundaries highlighted in blue, and then go down to C1 and say the same, the boundaries of the Town Hall are, as shown on the attached plat in red or something, and then actually just attach a plat showing the boundaries of the two buildings, so nobody wants to make mischief trying to argue where the boundaries are between the two since they share a wall.
Right. The, of course, the requirement on the signage or the stickers is at every entry which can be accessed by the general public. And the main door has a sticker already that says, "No weapons concealed or otherwise." And there are different types of stickers available, and a sticker could be put on that center door, which would also accomplish the same thing, or a small sign that says, "Police Department" on that hallway door could do that. Now, we did this, Commissioner Cameron and I sat with the chief and Andy there, what are you, lieutenant, sergeant?
Sergeant.
Huh?
Sergeant.
Sergeant in Greenway. We sat with them and discussed this and worked it out. I didn't feel the need to put the police department anyway because it's already given by state law, but it felt better that we did. So, I mean, and part of this, part of this is out of concession and deference to the chief and Sergeant Greenway's concerns.
It would be more helpful if you just said, "B1, Lakelure Police Department located at that address that they have."
2950?
Yeah, and then under C1, Town Hall listed, and then give the different address, Town Hall located on that different address.
Okay, that's 2948 for Town Hall and 2950 for the police department.
Yeah, and put those addresses showing different physical addresses on that.
Okay. Got it. Already put the numbers there. So, yeah. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, before we vote, I would like to ask Mr. Phillips if he had any questions after hearing all this discussion.
I do have one.
He is smiling. And he's smiling.
Okay. Could you please clarify, if I understood correctly, you were talking about modifying it and saying that even though there are stickers on the back door back here, if we have a concealed carry permit, we could still carry in here?
In here, yes.
Okay.
But not the police department.
Right. Okay. It is my understanding, as a concealed carry permit holder, any building or property so posted actually would be in violation of state law if I carried in a place like that.
No. The ordinance says that this shall not apply, just like many of the state sections. Let me pull one here for you real quick. Under statewide uniformity, or, no, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one, under 1441511, permit to carry concealed handgun, scope of permit, it tells you all the places you can't carry, and then it tells you who can carry there even though it's prohibited. Later on, in another, "Carrying weapons into assemblies and establishments where alcoholic beverages are sold and consumed."
Right.
It starts out that it's unlawful to carry any gun, rifle, or pistol into any assembly where a fee has been charged for admission, or into any establishment where alcoholic beverages are sold and consumed. Then it says, "B, this section shall not apply to any of the following." And then it goes down under number five, "A person carrying a handgun if the person has a valid concealed handgun permit issued in accordance with Article 54." So I modeled this after the state law and the method. So they set the prohibition and then say, and provide an exception.
Well, it was my understanding of the concealed carry permit law, that any building or place, be it private or public, that is so posted properly in accordance with state law, I could not carry. And that's why I was wanting a clarification of that.
That's true, but you could still carry here in this building and Lake Operations.
Okay. And with that said, I want to thank you for explaining everything and bringing this forward because this is something that is near and dear to my heart as a firearms instructor and a very active member of the shooting community. Thank you.
Well, I was going to add, in 2008, first of all, this ordinance enacted in November 1995. It was never put into force or anything done with it until February 2008 after the Kirkwood, Missouri Town Council shooting. And in May 2008, you appeared before this council and asked that they take the stickers down because they put them up as a reaction to that shooting.
Yes, they did.
And prior to that, they weren't here on this building. And I know that, so.
Well, I didn't go and check, but somebody told me that the stickers already been taken off the back door.
That door because the door was changed.
Oh.
The sticker, and that door is not for general access to the public anyway.
Okay.
No, that door was changed in total, and that's why there's no sticker on there.
Okay. The motion made by Stephen, modified with addresses for, I'm sorry.
I have a question concerning what sort of, we're doing signage in our parks. Right now, at the Nature Trail Park there across Mingles, we have verbiage on the instructions of use of the park that firearms are not allowed and that hunting is not allowed.
I've got a picture of that sign.
Yeah. How should we change that? Take off any mention of firearms and just prohibit hunting?
If you want to say hunting is prohibited, that to me is not a problem. Yes, I would remove any mention of firearms.
All right. Thank you.
Isn't it the Dipper Watts?
Oh, the other thing, Ed, is at the time the ordinance was done in 1995, Dipper Watts or Donald Ross Park did not exist. So that was not one of the named town properties, so any posting prohibiting it right now is not legal.
Okay. So... Reviewing the signage.
Got it. That's why I mentioned to Valerie a month or so back that we might want to wait on changing that signage until all this was heard.
Okay. Again, the motion made by Stephen and modified with the addresses of the two locations here, second by Bob. Do I hear any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Move on.
Okay. Andy, I'll give you this with the amendments on the addresses and the paragraph D, so you have it for your record.
Okay. If we go through staff reports, and I think we'll start with Sam. You have a report for us?
Sure. I'll make it brief. The upset bid process has started at the town's lakefront lot with Boathouse for sale. That's the property on Buffalo Shoals right beyond the dam. We received two bids on May 31st. The highest bid was 49,500. So that set the upset bid process in motion. We posted a public notice that we may accept bids by June 20th. The increase, there's a calculation, but the minimum next bid needs to be 52,025 accompanied with a bid deposit equal to 5% of the increased bid. We installed riprap along Morris Park Point to help with erosion. We're working on fixing the sinkhole at the strip store mall parking lot. The contractor promised me he would start tomorrow, so need to get that project moving along. Looks kind of ugly up there. We had two emergency sewer repairs, one at the beach and one at the marina. And we also, last month, received two letters of resignations, one from the town accountant, Julie Shear. She's taking the job as finance director for the town of Marion. Sounds familiar. And also, I need to let you know that I've contacted a CPA firm in Asheville that will help us with our books, and they're actually, they audit the Village of Chimney Rock, so they have municipal experience. And we've got the blessing from our auditors, so that's in the works. The other resignation was a police officer who was accepting a job with the Rutherford County Sheriff Department. The police logged 791 activities last month. The community development, three vacation rental permits were issued. We have a total of 259 active permits. Seven sign permits were issued, four BOA hearing processed, and Sheila is on leave, and I think she'll be back sometime around June 23, possibly. But fortunately, we have Susie Smoyer will be filling in half-days, three, four times a week. Lake Ops, complete dredging on the pond behind Lakeview Store. We completed buoy maintenance and ordered new solar buoy lights. We began mapping lake depth readings. We use that as a database to identify areas and conditions that require dredging. Public Works, grading done on Luther Burbank, new water service added on Fisher Court. The beach parking restriped to a 45-degree angle, which was suggested by the DOT and Chambers endorsement, and I didn't, Kevin and Wynne, I didn't make, and Tommy, I didn't make your follow-up meetings. I'm not sure how y'all, how that all worked out. Speaking of the Chamber, fireworks are over Lake Lure Beach on July 3 at dusk. I think that's on a Sunday. And lastly, congratulations to the first high school graduating class in Lake Lure in almost 60 years. What impressed, great, they graduated on Saturday, and what impressed me about the 26 graduates, they're all going to college. I think one is going to trade school, but they're all moving on to higher education.
Awesome.
I think they'll represent the town very well.
You're just happy because one of them's your daughter, and now you kick her out.
Absolutely.
All right. Steve, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. The Board of Adjustment had four cases for their May meeting. One was a variance, and the others were vacation rentals, and all were approved. Then there was a special BOA meeting on June 3, not because there's anything special about the case, it was only because the application had gotten misplaced and had been submitted on time but did not get into the board hearing. So in order to do the right thing by the applicants, they held a special hearing, and that was for a variance, and that was approved. The Lake Structure Appeals Board had one case, which was also approved, and if I recall, that was for a variance. The Parks and Rec Board, I did not attend because I was out of town trying to retrieve my wife, who had been gone for six weeks, and I was really mad because Customs let her back in the country. But, so Commissioner Moore did me a great favor. Commissioner Moore did me a great favor and attended that meeting on my behalf.
Okay, yeah. I did attend the Parks and Recreation meeting for Commissioner Weber. There was no zoning and planning meeting this past month. At the Parks and Rec meeting, Jim Walters mentioned that the work was continuing on the stone walkway at the Flower and Bridge. They've got, said they're almost to Boys Camp Road on that, and that a water fountain has been added there. Directional signs need to be made at the Dipper Watts Nature Trail, which we talked about a bit earlier. At Buffalo Creek Park and the Trail to Eagle Rock, Larry Chakowski mentioned that the... At Buffalo Creek Park and the Trail to Eagle Rock, Larry Jakowski mentioned that the, oh, it's going well with that project, that it's taking shape nicely. There was a request from the emergency management of how they would, they had some concerns about how would they get in and access the trail if someone were hurt, and they have met and worked out a, a program for how they'll address that if there is something. There are different accesses that they can use, and they've worked it out where it's, they have an acceptable emergency management plan there. The Larry is, Jakowski is also working with Eric Moore with the North Carolina Department of Administration and State Parks on getting a lot to be used as a trailhead and a parking area. The, a white, a white paper analysis of the goose population management has been put together and is, the board reviewed it, and it was prepared by Jim Walters, and it will be published and available to everyone showing what our plan of action is with, with geese. And there'll also be an article in the upcoming Mountain Breeze about the, about the same thing. So, that was Parks and Recreation.
Very good, thanks, John. I have to, I have to make one comment, is that our town ma, former town manager was up on that leg of the trail where they looked at emergency management. He went up there by himself, nobody knew he was up there. He got to the end of the trail, turned it around, and faced about a 500-pound bear who charged him, who, they go through a charge, and he said he was holding his bike in the air, and finally, the bear just sort of looked away and walked away. This happened just last Thursday night, so.
So, the bear didn't want him either, huh?
That's right. Well, he, well, the joke went around, he was too, he was too skinny.
Yeah, not enough meat.
What, Chris?
Never bites.
Okay, Mary Ann?
Okay, the ABC Board, the store is showing good sales. They took no action regarding the issue of liquor license versus being able to serve beer and, the beer and wine license, because they felt it wouldn't impact their sales. I'm going to try to follow up with Woody to contact Raleigh and get the information that's needed to know what needs to change and how to change it, should we want to change it, to level the playing field for small businesses and in the interest of economic development in Lake Luer to the same category as Chimney Rock and Forest City. And for those who don't know what I'm talking about, Lake Luer, when they voted for the ABC store prohibited, it makes no sense to me, they prohibited sales, but restaurants, small restaurants or large restaurants who serve beer or wine must also have a liquor license, whether they want to serve liquor or not. And this is a problem for small businesses that want just beer and wine, because that's a few hundred dollars for that license. For the liquor license, it's a few thousand dollars. And in Chimney Rock and Forest City, that's not the case. They can just get a beer and wine license. So, we're trying to find out what Lake Ina would have to do to have the same standing as others. Restaurant like Medina's that just wants to serve beer and wine could not operate in, in Lake Luer without paying out thousands of dollars for a liquor license. And we think that's a problem for economic development. So, I will report more when I know more. The Lake Advisory Board met. Dean introduced Charlie Devaney, who will be helping with the Lake Patrol. Blaine Cox stated that citizens have been pleased with the tour boat operation since the updated operation plan went into effect. Logan Harsog presented a proposal for a water taxi, and board members agreed to revisit the topic at the next meeting. The Marine Commission at our meeting tonight pretty much gave him the go-ahead to try that venture for the remainder of the summer until November and to report back to the Lake Advisory Board and Town Council next September to determine if that's something we want to pursue and, and looks like something that's helpful in the town. Jonathan Hinkle was concerned that the town does a blanket permit for the shoreline stabilization each year, wanted to know if there's an easier process for stabilization. There was not much discussion with that, because we really have no control over it. By the towns getting a blanket permit, it makes it easier for landowners, but the landowners have to let Lake Operations know in advance in order to be a part and be included in that permit. Some of the special topics. Joe Pritchett presented information related to Lake Luer Tours, Rumbling Ball Resort, and Pirateer Guide Services. Board members discussed the need for agreements with all commercial operations. They discussed asking Town Council to direct the board to look into revenues and regulations of all commercial boats, not just tour boats, and that was a topic of discussion also at the Marine Commission meeting at 5:00 tonight. So, the board will be studying those issues further and reporting back to Town Council The only area report was, Haas Foss reported that fishing was good for the month of May and, and so far this summer. And I will just add that the area near my home that has been a, one of the best places for bass, the only thing I know of that's been caught this summer was a water snake about as long as I am tall and as big around as my fist or larger, and was caught on a hook, which is a new experience for me, and I've been around here a long time. And that's my report.
All right, we had our Utilities Advisory Board meeting last Tuesday. Main discussion is still with our green line project, the funding of it. I'm going to ask the mayor to speak, and I think he met with Mike Hager and the representative, ask him to give you a little brief on that in a minute. Spoke with Harlow Brown, he says our application's in. The way it looks, and this is for funding, to get that zero interest loan that we're looking for, for the project, it appears that we're in the top three of the applications, and Harlow felt very positive about the fact that we should, should hear something probably by the, I think the end of July. So, that process is going well, and, and hopefully, we'll get that financing. Also discussed a joint meeting with Spindale, the county and Isathermal, that hopefully we can get some additional help on that. And there's the grants out there, we're, of this big bond issue, we were entitled up to $3 million, so we've made that application, and it's my understanding we're trying to get the same from Spindale and, and Rutherford County to try to see if they could qualify to help us out as well. So, the board is working hard, all our people are working hard, and the mayor's been greatly involved in trying to, to get every source of funding we can, and then if you got any involved, if you could tell them about your meeting with Mike Hager. Yeah, the Connect funds that we voted on, it was a bond issue, there was like $380 million for utilities, and the, the application for those, Lake Luer, because of its medium income, did not qualify. But Spindale and the county could qualify. So, and it's up to $3 million, so we're hoping to, hopefully, we'll get the maximum on that, and it would mean a $6 million against the $12 million loan that we're taking out. The, the second part of that is, is that Mike Hager has gone after some funds, he's put it before the legislature of around somewhere between 12 and 15 million dollars, some of it to go to the eastern side of the county and some of it go to us. And that would be the nature of a $6 million, another $6 million. So, we, we are looking to get some help out of the state government on some of this activity. It looks like a viable project, we're keeping everything going. There's a lot of naysayers, because they look at a lot of the obstacles to making this happen, but we're, we're sort of knocking down those dominoes one at a time and trying to move forward. I think that was all, was there anything else? No, I appreciate you sharing that with everybody, and the only other thing the Utilities Board has was, the Flowering Bridge has a couple of needs. Their water bill is so high that we're encouraging them to put a pump into the river and pump directly from there, and also, they'll need additional power on the other end. They have a service, as you're facing the bridge from the river on the right side, but they've already maxed, about maxed it out, and then need additional service on the left side. So, we've got Wayne Hyatt's going to get with Bill Miller and get a formal presentation of what they totally need and try to get one package, and they're looking for donations. Anybody wants to donate, they'd be a great cause for them, and that's my report. Okay, very good, thank you all. A lot of activity. Moving on to item number 12 of public forum, the public's invited to speak on any non-agenda item, enter, send agenda topics. Comments should be limited to less than five minutes. We have two people, Fran, you've signed up, would you like to come forward?
I don't need to.
Why? Oh, you don't need to speak?
You may have some questions.
Okay, very good. Well, you kept it to less than five minutes, that was good. Okay, the other person is Kevin Cooley from the Chamber. Kevin?
Thanks, Mayor. My name's Kevin Cooley, I live at 135 Downing Place, and I speak on behalf of the Chamber. And the issue I want to bring to your attention this evening is, has to do with the town's banners, banner racks, and the current policy or procedures that are in place to regulate the posting of banners on those racks. Currently, the timeframe for posting banners on the rack is limited to two weeks. And so, from the Chamber standpoint, and as you're probably aware, the Chamber is continuing to produce or present more and more events each year, we found that two weeks is not a sufficient time to properly promote and announce to the community upcoming events and provide sufficient time for people to schedule around those events and to purchase tickets, which is our main concern, in time for the event. So, what we're asking for is possibly for you to refer this for further study to the Planning Board, to look at the possibility of extending the period of time to, up to four weeks, that an, an event or an event presenter could post a banner on the racks. And we think four weeks is a more appropriate period of time, and we, having monitored the racks now for quite a few months since they've been active, we don't really think that there's a sufficient amount of events where this is going to create a bottleneck or disallow someone from posting an event, because there's another event up for this length of time. There are four racks there, and, and possibly after study, you could limit it to two of the four racks for extended period of time, and then make the fee for posting the banner commensurate with the extended period of time. So, that's our, that's our issue very quickly, and, you know, we ask for your consideration to study that matter and, and see if it can be extended. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Kevin, one thing real quick, could you, could you let the public here know the dates for the Dirty Dancing Olympiad, just so everybody will know this year?
Yeah, well, I do know that the dates for the Dirty Dancing Festival, which, by the way, the Chamber has now taken over as a local community event, are August 19th and 20th, and I believe the Olympiad event is the...
12th through the 14th.
The weekend before, yeah, which would be the 12th and 13th.
Just want to let everybody know that, and also, the Chamber's involved in it now in Dirty Dancing, to let them know that.
Yeah, the Chamber has now taken over by a transfer, license transfer agreement, that event. We, we approached the promoter of that event, who is a Los Angeles, a private venture. A lot of people did not know that in the community and thought perhaps the Chamber had been responsible for that in the past, but we've added into an agreement that would transition the event to us starting this year, and there's a sort of a buyout arrangement with the promoter over a three-year period. But starting right now, the Chamber is fully in charge of that event, and we've had a planning team working earnestly on it now. I just came from a meeting this afternoon, and I, I think you will see a much expanded, better event, better managed. We've been meeting with, we've held a traffic summit, we're going to do a much better job on traffic congestion or control, parking, and, and the kinds of things that have created nuisance in the community for large events. So, you can look forward, I hope, to a better signature. This has become a signature event in the community.
And that's, I appreciate that, that's why I wanted to get it out.
Well, thanks for, yeah, bringing that up, yeah.
Before we move on, I guess we need to go ahead and have a motion to ask the zoning and planning board to review our banner ordinance, and I'll make a motion that we ask the zoning and planning board to review the banner ordinance.
I'll second it.
Motion made by John, second by Mary Ann. Any further discussion? I just want to say is that the Olympiad has the banners, but we, we put it up for 14 days, we waited two weeks, and put it up for another 14 days. So, we got around it some way, you know, just getting ahead of the thing.
You're smart.
It was somebody else, it wasn't me. Anyway, buddy, it, there are ways working with Sheila. Sheila came up with the idea, I believe, so it, it does work.
Oh, yeah.
I think so. Anyway, anybody else would like to speak before we move on?
We have a motion.
Okay, motion, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Before we move on to the next subject, would any other people like to, person, people like to speak? Hearing none? We'll move on to the consent agenda, item number 13. There's two things, approving minutes and approving the budget amendment concerning end-of-year budget overrides.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Under item 13A, approving the minutes, the April 28 minutes, I need to, I guess on page three, I thought, it's not in the minutes, but I thought that we did do a motion to come out of closed session before we did the adjournment. We might have missed it, but I thought we did.
We did that.
We did. Okay, so that, that should be modified by Andy.
Which one did you say? I'm sorry.
April 28th, page three. Okay, any other thoughts or changes? Okay, hearing none, good. Do I have a motion to approve? I'll make the motion. To prove the, I made a motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes. Yes. Second? Second by Mary Ann, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? My knowledge, no one finished business. Moving to new business, I think we can move through this quickly without taking a break, so why don't we try to do that? Okay, 15A, discussion regarding the Asset Management Task Force and consider adoption of Resolution Number 1606-14. We really, okay, considering the Asset Management Task Force, that probably should be 14V or...
No. Oh. It's, it's a resolution, so it's 1606-14. It's the first resolution of the night.
All right.
The others were ordinances. The others were ordinances, so that was 14 and 14A.
Okay, very good. Stand corrected.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I'll kick this off. I submitted the memo to add it to the agenda. In June of 2014, we created the Town Asset Management Task Force, and we established it as a task force with an indefinite roster, timeframe, and terms. And the original memo said, "If we see continuing value from this group, we can always establish a more formal advisory board." And I believe that the value of this board has proven itself time and again, and it's something that we definitely need to make into a full advisory board. And that's why I've submitted the recommendation. And kudos to Andy for preparing the draft resolution. And I apologize to our attorney, Chris Callahan, for disturbing him on his leave, but I sent him a question about whether or not such an advisory board could go into closed session to discuss strategic acquisition of property, real property, which they might have to do sometimes. And the premature disclosure of such a thing to the public might actually harm a potential deal or plan, long-range plan for the town. And Chris, I don't know if you're prepared to discuss that tonight or not.
It would be the same rules as the board.
Okay.
Give me a second. I'll read the statute. There is a section...
Okay.
About going to closed session for real estate acquisitions.
Right, it's A5.
Yeah, hold on.
There was just simply some discussion whether or not an advisory board could do that on its own, or did the town council have to delegate?
Same rules as the town council.
Okay.
They can do just like the town council.
Okay.
Same rules apply.
So, they would be able to do that?
If the town council could do it, sure.
Right, okay, got it.
I have a question about current policy and procedures, because I believe there are at least three members of that task force that currently serve on the other boards. And it was my understanding that folks could serve on one elected and one appointed board. Is that a change we would have to make in order for those persons to...
Well, none of those are elected. None of those are elected. They're all appointed.
Yes, but one, one appointed board.
Oh, no, I understood you could be on two appointed boards.
Correct.
Just like we do BOA, LSAB. Those are two different boards. And, yeah, the same people are on them, but they're appointed to two different boards. And I understand, and our attorney's raising his hand.
Yeah, the answer to that is the open meetings law does allow an exception, and it would apply to the town council, but it would apply to your board, to go into closed session to establish or to instruct the staff here or negotiating agents, like a real estate agent, concerning the position to be taken by our, on behalf of the public body, in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease, or the amount of compensation. So, again, be the same here, I don't think they can go into closed session just to discuss general strategies for the future. But if it boils down to a specific piece of property with an interest in it, yes. Same thing about personnel. You can't really go into closed session and discuss just general personnel policies, apply equally to everybody. But if you're discussing one or two or three particular personnel, yes.
Okay. We had, I think we satisfied ourselves with that one. Mary Ann raised another issue about serving on multiple boards. We thought you were going to answer that.
I'm still looking up.
Yeah. That's right.
As far as I know, it's, you can have one elected and one appointed, or two.
Right.
Okay.
So, we're okay here, then?
Okay. I would, on the draft resolution, I would only make one amendment, and that is where it talks about under section two. First, we would be calling it the Asset Management Advisory Board at this point. And it'd be one ex officio member who shall be appointed by the town manager. I assume that ex officio member is also the staff representative, and I believe that staff representative for this board should be the town manager.
As it was with Chris, was he?
Right.
That makes sense.
I believe that ex officio or staff member for this board should always be the town manager. And I think we should say that directly, that that's who that is.
We can include that. That's a good suggestion. Okay, well, we'll hear a motion then regarding...
Yeah, I'll make that motion that we go ahead and take the Asset Management Force and create a board.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And so, and we need to add the, with the liaison, or with the, with the, what's it, ad hoc or ex officio?
Staff member.
Staff member being the town manager.
Can we just take out those two words and say, the member shall be the town manager? Instead of shall be appointed by the town manager?
That's fine. Yeah, yeah.
You don't have a gap to fill for that yet.
Okay. But we also need to establish a commissioner or a council liaison. And this might be a surprise to one fellow commissioner, but I was going to recommend Commissioner Moore, simply because he's the commissioner for the zoning and planning, and they meet the same morning. Asset Management Board meets at 8:00 on the third Tuesday, and the zoning and planning meets at 9:30 on the third Tuesday. It would just make sense, since he already has to be here, that would be appropriate for it.
I appreciate you keeping up with my calendar for me there.
No, I'm just making a recommendation, just like I was volunteered last Friday by my fellow commissioners.
We don't miss them.
Do you want to include that as part of the motion, Bob?
Yes.
Okay, so the, well, I mean, what do you think?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so it's a, it's making it a board, making the town manager, being the ex officio, and the John Moore serving as liaison. Okay, that's, motion made by Bob. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by John. Reluctantly.
Discussion, just to be clear, the motion is to adopt Resolution Number 16-06-14, creating an Asset Management Advisory Board. That's the motion, basically, as amended.
Basically, we changed it from an ad hoc committee into a standing committee.
Full advisory board, right.
With a couple of amendments, yes.
So, we'll end up having to establish terms for those members already there tonight, and we're also going to have to appoint a member to fill the vacancy.
Okay, motion made by Bob. Do we hear a second? Made by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's approved. And now, we need to make an appointment, because one person resigned from the board. So, we have to vote. There's a slip in front of each of you.
I'd like to make one comment about this. We've got, I see, we've got one applicant here who's very well qualified, but not a resident of the town of Lake Lure. And we've got another applicant that are, a couple of applicants that are residents. And this, this board is, when we're talking about things like the Look Store, moving it, and selling a boathouse, and doing different things with property around, I think it's essential that we have community buy-in. And I think a good way to do that is to have more, is to the extent we can, to the extent we have qualified applicants, to have folks who live in the town on the board is kind of our first choice. So, with that, I know sometimes we make recommendations and sometime we don't, but in this one, I'd like to, personally, my recommendation would be Betty Ross.
Okay. It probably wouldn't be surprising, but I was the one that thought having somebody from Chimney Rock be part of this, because we are more and more so operate as one community, and there are a lot of things that happen between the two towns. So, I was the one that called Barbara Maleski and Peter O'Leary, and then Bob's name surfaced as a result of that. So, I don't, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you. I just say, I want to say is that I thought Bob was very well qualified for that position and would serve well.
Yeah, I agree, but that he would sure do an excellent job. But since we're talking about property that's owned by the town of Lake Lure, owned by the citizens, the citizens pay the taxes and all, I think that someone living here or even absent that, a property owner would, well, I just, I just think that should be a consideration, and I think that, I think that Betty would do a good job there.
If I might add, of course, also, Robert Wall does own property in both communities, just so you know.
Right.
But, and the fact, well, this would not be the first time we've had somebody apply for a board that does not live in town. And if we appointed him, it would not be the first time we've appointed someone that doesn't live in the town limits.
Exactly.
So, okay.
Okay.
Why don't you, is there a recommendation?
Vote, see where it lands.
Well, first of all, on this new one, we need to establish the term limits, but on this new one, I was looking at appointing him for a two-year term, him or her, whoever it is, this new one we're appointing.
Do we need to go down with these, also, and verify what their terms are?
I'd recommend, going down the list that we have, I'd recommend a 3-2, 3-2, and a 1-1.
So, that's 3, 3-2, 3-2?
Right, and a 1-1. And then, and then appoint the new one for two. And then they become staggered at the ends of those terms.
Doesn't mean they would leave, they just, they'd be up for reappointment.
They'd come up for reappointment, right.
In December.
New one, new one, get two.
Okay. That's okay with me.
Go along with it.
Okay. So, why don't we pass the votes down? And vote for the person?
Okay, I understand now, all of them are either residents or property owners in Lake Lure. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, no, I don't think they all are right now.
Yeah, it may not be.
Oh, you're talking about the existing?
You're talking about the three applicants?
Yes.
The three applicants all are property owners in Lake Lure? As far as I know.
And you got two who live in the town of Lake Lure?
Two reside and one owns property. They all own property.
Betty Ross and Barbara Cersey both live here and own property.
Right. Pass these down to Sam Bell?
Yes.
Did Betty Ross specifically apply for this board?
Yeah.
Okay, make sure, because I just saw her last night, she didn't do today.
Yeah.
Yes, August was last year.
No, no, it's just, I always went in just in case it's a tiebreak, so I think I've already told you what my tiebreak would be.
Pass this down to Andy, please. Are we all in agreement on those numbers? 3-2, 3-2, 1-1?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to do a motion on that?
I'll make it.
Okay.
Mayor, your vote is counted.
My vote is counting? Your vote is counted.
Okay, so it's 3-2.
Okay.
What is it? 3-2.
2-2.
With Bob's.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm going to find out where we are here.
2-Robbers.
And do we, do we agree that we do have to make a motion on the 3-2, 3-2, whatever it is?
Probably.
Where the numbers were. You break a tie in every vote?
The term.
On the terms.
Well, you make the recommendation, make it a motion.
What?
This.
On the number of years. Oh, okay.
The terms.
That isn't what needs to be, okay. All right, I make a motion that the terms be set as follows. Andy Bell, 3. Charlie Ellis, 2. Jonathan Hinkle, 3. Mike Holden, 2. Tom McKay, 1. Linda Turner, 1. And then after that, they become eligible for reappointment at the ends of those terms. The new member to be appointed, a two-year term.
Okay.
That's the motion.
Who is the second?
I'll second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous? Okay. And now, we got down to the appointment, and it was a 2-2, and I added, made it Bob Wall.
So, he'll be the new one.
And he's got a two-year term.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Item 15C, consider approval of request submitted by the Chamber of Hickory Knut Gorge concerning events to be held on July 3, 2016.
Is this chamber going to speak to that?
Okay, come on forward, Win. I'm sorry, I was waiting for, I saw Tommy back there, and I saw Kevin. When you wrote the letter...
I'm the culprit. Yeah, I'm Win Hardy, 218A, Ziggler Drive, and also speaking on behalf of the Chamber Board. Yeah, the, as I think everyone knows, the town has been the primary sponsor for a number of years of the fireworks activities in town, accounting for about 80% of the financial support. The remaining 20% has come from Chimney Rock Village. And in recent years, the Chamber has been trying to get involved financially too, to help pick up part of that, that role financially. But we appreciate your past support. The request this year is that we're doing a little more activities in support of attendees for the fireworks activities. There's been some interest in having some food vendors available, maybe some activities for kids and families in Morse Park Meadows. We've tried to add some assistance traffic control-wise by doing some parking to minimize the problems that's taken place in recent years. The request that is presented before you was that, that we ask for waiver of the rental fees for Morse Park Meadows and a waiver of the dumpster fees, as well as suspension of the pedaling ordinance. This was all done last year, apparently, you know, in talking with Commissioner Sylvie, wasn't really presented to the council, although the former town manager had approved it in some fashion. Maybe that was not official. And anyway, we, in any event, we were doing the same thing this year we did last year in discussing it with Commissioner Sylvie, and with the understanding that this has traditionally been a, primarily a town-sponsored event. Her suggestion was that rather than addressing a request for waiver, perhaps the rate fees for these, particularly the dumpster and the, and the Meadows rental, be considered an exception in the case of town-sponsored events, particularly if there's a co-party that's involved, it's a not-for-profit organization. So, I guess I'll leave that for your deliberation, but I, you know, it's, again, it's not really any change from what took place last year. We don't envision any change going forward, other than we expect to maybe expand the activities that support the, the community, the visitors, and the residents that attend the fireworks festivities. So, it's a one-day event, July 3, Sunday.
Well, regardless of, we may need to do the suspension of the pedaling ordinance.
Correct.
I'm not sure about that.
Correct.
But I was concerned about asking for fee waivers, because this is something that got out of hand, and every nonprofit wanted a waiver of fees. And in this case, because this is a jointly sponsored thing with the town and Chimney Rock and the Chamber, I felt like we should not grant waivers, we just simply don't charge ourselves for use of our property as a sponsor of this event. And because if we start giving individual waivers, our staff is going to go nuts, and we're going to have requests from every nonprofit that uses town property, and they're asking us to give away revenue for the taxpayers. us to give away revenue for the taxpayers.
Win, if I understand it, what you're asking for this year is the same as what it was last year, it's just that it didn't come before us last year, I guess?
Correct. Now, now, you, you may, you know, you may want to reconsider how you, you deal with the, with the fee schedule in the case of town-sponsored events. I mean, that's the other option, I guess, and which, which, which voids the, the waiver aspect of our request this time.
Well, that was my suggestion, that perhaps what we need to do is add to that fee schedule a simple statement that only, uh, town-sponsored events are exempt from the fee schedule, because that fee schedule was redone to reduce the fees substantially for nonprofits.
For nonprofits.
Rather than waivers.
Right.
I, I understand all that, and I had a question though, on, on, on what you're talking about, the dumpster fee. What dumpsters where are we talking about?
Well, well, there's, there's several food vendors, or snack vendors really, that'll be in, in, in the meadows, and, and last year, we were advised that that would normally require some, some fee for disposal of trash, uh, which was really beyond the scope of the, of the chamber's financial ability to do, and, and, and we were given approval to provide trash service on our own, with our own responsibility, which, which happened, and which I think everybody in town was, uh, was satisfied with. And that's, and that's what we would request to be done again this year.
It's not bringing in any dumpsters then?
No, 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 no. It's basically providing our own trash hauling.
Yeah, it's not using any existing dumpsters anywhere.
No, we bring our, bring on our own trash containers, um, and, and remove all the trash after the event.
So there are no real fees or dumpster fees to waive?
Well, that, well, no, well, except that, as it was explained to me last year by the town manager, we were subject to ha, to having to pay that fee by virtue of having vendors in the meadows. So, so, because we couldn't afford it, that, you know, we were looking for an alternative, and the alternative solution was that we provide our own trash, uh, removal.
And the reason I suggested, uh, the exemption of town-sponsored events is because we're, we're talking about the, the taxpayers' money, and this is an event that's done primarily and expected by the taxpayers on the Fourth of July, and sponsored in part by the town.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that rationale, and, and I think for such town-sponsored events, that they should be on that fee schedule that being exempt.
Okay.
So do we want to do a motion to, to make that amendment to the fee schedule, or do we want?
I will make the motion to, uh, add that exemption to the fee schedule that only town-sponsored events are exempt from the fees.
Okay.
I think we're tying our hands just a bit with that. I think it'd be, uh, I prefer, personally, we prefer to see, uh, that town, um, the town-sponsored event shall be exempt and leave only out. That leaves us the option to look at others if they come along. We don't know what might crop up down the road.
Oh, they'll come every, every month.
The chamber will try to come up with some, if that helps.
Yeah, I, I don't mind being more specific, I mean, uh, well, are you seconding that with that amendment, or?
Yeah, I'll second it with that amendment.
Okay, motion made.
He seconded with his amendment.
Okay, like, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay, motion seconded. Any further discussion?
Now, this is only for changing zoning law, correct?
The fee schedule.
No, it's the fee schedule, yeah.
Right, we're not voting on them yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay.
Now, so, now we would need to.
Now you come before us as a town-sponsored event.
Right.
Right.
So, I recommend.
Now, we'll get to the same place where we don't be.
I recommend we dismiss this request, being unnecessary.
It's null and void.
Since it is a town-sponsored event.
Okay, but we gotta make sure we address suspending the peddling ordinance.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yep, so we just need to address that the peddling ordinance will be suspended.
Yeah, we still request the suspension of that, yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the suspension of the peddling ordinance, uh, and any discussion of fees in this request, uh, are exempt as a town-sponsored event.
Okay, motion made by Stephen, seconded by Bob. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And also, uh, the chamber would like to thank council for their financial support the past several years, like, you know, it, we can't express how helpful it's been and crucial to our ability to pursue some of the initiatives that, that we hope benefit our community, not only just the business community, but also the residents and the visitors to the area.
We appreciate the hard work y'all do.
So, thank you very much.
All right, Win, don't push yourself.
All right, fifteen D, discussion regarding the process for review of approval, government signage, content, size, consistency with various town plans and branding.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Mayor, this is another memo I put forth to have on the agenda, uh, and it, it results from, uh, I turned the corner one day, well, first of all, let me back up. We, we did a great deal of eliminating nineteen signs on Boys Camp Road when we removed the speed bumps. We turned around, and also a month or two later, it pops up fifteen no parking signs out of the blue. Uh, some of them are under the brand system, and some of them are the regulatory signs from the state, no parking, red and white. Governmental signs under our zoning regulations are exempt from the zoning regulations, uh, and, and there is no established process that I can find, uh, that, that, on how those, from concept to impeachment, I cannot find any rule of process established on how that is handled, or who does what. Uh, I turned the corner one day, and, and Commissioner Cameron did too, and, uh, one of our public works guy was out there getting ready to put up a sign, putting a post in, discussing the sign. It is a six-foot-long, four-foot-tall sign that would have been two-sided under the brand, uh, design. Yes, great information, probably a, a, a very good sign, I don't doubt that, but the positioning of it was less than a hundred feet from the intersection of sixty-four and Boys Camp. And it was expected that people would slow down or stop to read that sign, or would need to because of the amount of information on it. Not that the, the letters weren't big enough to read, they were, there was just so much information there. So it, it made me question, uh, what policy the town has regarding such a thing, and, and from the time we concede that a sign is need, needed, what the content is on it, what it says, what message it puts out to the public, the size, and the consistency with our various town plans, which I feel is very important. Uh, we gotta make sure that any sign we put out there of a governmental nature lends itself to what we want to happen in this town and the vision that we have with the town. Uh, the branding design, of course, we've already agreed upon, and Valerie does a super job on that, but I'm just want, I'm wanting to look at placement, size, content, and so on. Uh, and I think we, we somehow need to develop that policy. I don't know who should discuss it, whether it be the zoning and planning board, uh, or, or the community development department, or the town manager, but I wanted to bring that forth for discussion, uh, to try to get some direction on where we need to go with that. Thank you.
Is this not addressed currently in the sign ordinance?
No. And governmental signs are exempt?
Okay.
And the only problem with this sign is it was right next to the highway, and you imagine a six-foot sign, that close, remember the old yellow sign that was on Boys Camp?
Yeah, notice the trucker's a big, same size.
This one's on this side of the VFW where they cut down the big tree, it's right there, and there's just no way you could read it that quickly, because you're dodging traffic coming from Flowergrave, people coming at you, and you've got a six-foot wide sign with ten line items, eight wide items, but it's right beside the road, I mean, it's...
And it, and it was two-sided, so it'd be read for one, it'd be one aspect of things going in and up the road, and then another batch of information coming out. Uh, and, and some of that's directional, like if you're looking for restaurants, they're up the road in Chimney Rock and all. Great information, I don't have a problem with the information or the content on this particular sign, uh, but, but that's what brought the issue up.
Want to ask Zoning and Planning to look at it, since they do the sign ordinance?
Yep, okay.
Well, they can look at how it, how it is currently happening and how that occurred to see.
And review placement, placement and size, I mean, this was a huge.
Okay, so we'll, we'll ask, we'll ask the, the motion be to ask the community direct, development director, and, uh, to, uh, come up, to give us an explanation of where we are now and how we got to where we, to, to that sign, and ask the zoning and plan, and have that at the next zoning and planning meeting, and they, and ask the zoning and planning board to review the process and give us a recommendation. Is that, is that, is that what you want?
How about exactly as we had worded here, in the, the process for review and approval of governmental signage, content, size, and consistency?
Okay, have a, have a discussion, have the zoning planning board have a discussion concerning the process for review and approval of government signage, content, size, and consistency with the various town plans and branding, and bring a recommendation, or provide a recommendation to town council.
For a procedure, yes.
Yeah, and.
Motion made by John, do you hear a second? Before we go to discussion?
You got a couple of questions now.
Yeah. What's in the discussion period? So, motion made by John, do you hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Bob. All right, any further discussion?
Some of it.
She wants her five minutes now.
Fran Moore, one fifty-six, Hilltop Court, Lake Lure. Part of that signage was done while Chris was here, because we had people parking on the side of the road, breaking off edges of the road.
I understand.
Going in, backing out, parking in the middle of the road, blocking the road. He first put up the governmental signs, which did not work, which could be removed. But then Valerie designed very nice signs that, I believe there are four going up the road. And we hope, we pray, you leave those in place, because they do keep people from parking and creating a hazard on the road.
The, the, the branding signs are governmental signs?
The branding signs are good, the ones Valerie made. The governmental, they paid no attention to.
The red and white are not governmental.
They don't pay, they don't pay attention to them. They paid attention to Valerie's sign.
Right, and what, what this has done is recognize, though, this one sign, the placement was just...
I didn't even see that sign.
Well, they never, they never went up.
It never put up. But I'm just, just, please don't take Valerie's signs down.
No, and, and what we're trying to do is say there needs to be, there, there just needs to be a procedure in place.
Yeah.
Versus just setting up a sign.
Yeah.
We're not talking about taking down those three no parking on the side of the road signs that are done with the branding design.
Yeah.
We're not talking about that.
Okay.
But those are your governmental signs.
The red and white ones are?
No, the red and white are regulatory traffic signs.
Okay.
They're state regulatory traffic signs.
They didn't listen to them.
These are governmental signs, are the signs put out by the town about town stuff under the branding effort and so on.
Okay.
Those are all governmental signs.
If you could just consider including Valerie's signs when you make your motion, so we keep our four signs.
The review will be all governmental signage in the process.
Okay.
Yeah. Not talking about the signs as much as talking about the process.
Yeah, we're not talking about those particular signs.
Okay, all right.
I haven't heard the source or the purpose of the sign that never got up.
Neither do I.
I have no idea what we're talking about.
I can speak to it, since I designed it.
Yeah, I've got a picture here somewhere.
Six by four.
I was...
Yeah, it's six feet by four foot.
I was asked by the town manager, uh, after the problems continued with the people walking on the streets of Boys Camp Road and the parking, I was asked to create sort of a campaign, uh, for signs on Boys Camp Road, and like we do with all sign requests that come to us, that are going to have the branding applied to it, depending on what the content's going to be, is what determines the size. But there is a process already in place, Commissioner Weber, for, uh, what that process is gonna be. It's all, it's called the branding style guide, which all of you approved with the branding in, uh, twenty thirteen. So there already is a process in place. That said, I think as the brand continues to get deployed in year four and five, I wholeheartedly support the concept of us coming up with a formal procedure in place when department heads come to me and they want signs. If that's a request form, something like a permit, but not a permit, something that I would work with Shannon's department on, that would just sort of be, how many signs do you want, what do you want them to say, what is the main messages you want them, where do you want them placed? And then we could sort of decide, because it's not going to be an apples-to-apples-to-apples thing every time. Signage on Buffalo Creek Park would be different than signage at Detmer Watts Park, different sizes, different places. So I think we have to leave, uh, some room for the creativity, because that's sort of the whole point of us having the, the branding signs. But I wanted to just make sure that you know that there is a process in place already, and that is the branding style guide. That's what determines what the size.
Style, style guide.
The style guide.
But, and that establishes a process from concept to placement?
The visual look of the sign, the graphics, the colors, the fonts, the type, style, all of that is, is our bible of the...
But it doesn't address the content, it doesn't address the size, it doesn't address the location of it.
Right, because that's not uniform from application to application. So, case in point, with your earlier, uh, discussion tonight about the firearms, that's a perfect example that now that we know that that verbiage is wrong, we need to go back and look at that again. What was the other thing that somebody said, oh, no camping at, uh, Detmer Watts Park? That we need to have that in there, because...
No hunting, yeah.
No hunting.
Oh, it was camping, I thought you said.
Some people do camp.
Yeah.
I think they're camping.
They've been camping.
Yeah.
We have, we made no mention of camping.
That's right. That's right.
And maybe you need to, I don't know.
Well, as I understand it, I guess there were people camping there over the weekend? Anyway, that's, that's sort of the leeway we have to leave ourselves sometimes with the content of it. Um, so I would love to be a part of the conversation at zoning and planning, and with community development, and coming up with, uh, something that might be a, a request that the department heads could use.
Awesome.
Now, my last question for you is, um, do you want me to hold off on the status of all the requests that have come to me thus far? We have a whole litany of signs that need to be updated at Detmer Watts Park. Do you want to wait until we have a, um...
Well, now...
Program in place, or?
This is signage that is not increasing, or...
Right, right.
Essentially the same size as what's there now. The big signs are off, but at the end of the parking area, just the entrance to Park, there's only a small sign out on the highway.
I, I got it.
Directing, and what it is.
I'm on your side, Ed, I got it.
Delay another two months?
No, I agree. I, I agree, uh, and, and...
It's just replacing the color to be able to focus with the branding.
Yeah, these, these different trail signs that you have in the park showing each trail name, and the distance and all that, that's all well and good. Uh, I'm looking at these big informational signs, uh, that go out here to the general public with messages that, that the council, or zoning and planning, or community development has not had a chance to bounce against plans, the long-range plans, short-range plans, making sure all of that stuff is consistent with what those plans call for. Uh, I understand the branding plan is a plan, yes, they're consistent with that in style and design, but that has nothing to do with the content, the size, the placement, uh, and, and the effect of it. Another point is, uh, the big sign, uh, that was going up has, I believe it has Chimney Rock, Hickory Nut Chamber, and Lake Lure. There's three government entities indicated on the sign. Has any coordination been done with those other two entities to make sure they're okay with the content of the sign? I mean, you know, just as an example for discussion, and that's what we need a process for, is to make sure all that stuff meshes.
So again, that is all in the branding recommendations that we work collaboratively with Chimney Rock Village, they were part of the branding exercise.
I understand.
So, yes, and one of the key recommendations in our branding was that we would be reaching out to, uh, the boulders and the rock climbers, so that is why that billboard-type of sign was created in the first place. Now, I did not get into the actual physical installation of the sign. I didn't go down there with Public Works and say, put it right there. Perhaps I should be more involved in that, but I didn't.
And really, the size is just too large. I mean, that thing just overtakes you. And really, the size is just too large, I mean, that thing just overtakes you, I mean, so large, and then to have it double-sided.
Well, that was so that when they come down from the rock climbing, it was to entice them and invite them to stay for a while and not just leave, because that was one of the key things that Arnett Muldro found out, is that our rock climbers were coming here and they were leaving, and this was sort of an advertisement and an invitation to get them to try to stay longer. I get it that you think it's too big, but-
And wrong place.
And it was, it's actually the same size as the ugly yellow sign that was already there, so I didn't, I didn't go any different in size.
I didn't like that one either. But anyway, there just needs to be a review of that, to get more-
Well, I agree with you.
And please understand, this is not an attack on you.
I don't feel attacked, I'm just explaining to you that I didn't arbitrarily just put a sign up there.
I want you to know that, I'm looking at the process and the meshing with the plans, because I think all of that's important, and right now, we don't have that facet of the process established.
I agree. It's time for a process to be in place.
But yes, with regard to the changeover at Dittmer Watts Park, there's no problem with any of those signs out there, especially the ones that have Donald Ross that need the name changed, I mean, there's no problem with that. And under the brand image, there's no problem with any of the content out there. The one thing you'd have to change, but other than that, there's nothing wrong with that.
One of the other ones that is on schedule to be changed this next budget year is the tri-panel sign at the main boat launch as you go into Washburn Marina. That one has the old logo, it has the big stop thing, and it's got the image of Dean on it, and it's just, that one completely needs to be-
Yeah, you have three large panels right there together.
Yeah.
One of them's got Dean's face on it, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to take that off.
Anyway, that one's on schedule too, but I welcome the opportunity to work, to come up with a process for that.
Okay, last point, go ahead, Ed.
I just wanted to add that, in regard to that sign at Washburn Marina, the Parks and Recreation Board is planning, or has looked at, at the possibility of putting Parks and Recreation information on the side that's, where you have the little park area there, where seating area, have Parks and Recreation there and have Lake Operation on the other side for those using the boat ramp for launching.
Making the dual-sided, dual-information, sure?
Right.
Why, hey, that's less posts that have to go up?
Yeah, smart move.
Okay, yep.
One of the, one of the things you may want to do is just, any future signs, rather than stop signs from being erected, simply have them come before you and show a plan, put it in your package. And if you like the way it looks and where it's gonna be placed, you can approve that while we're doing this study. It's gonna take a little while for us to do that, but in the interim, it can come to you for review and approval. And that way, if Valerie has some things already in the queue, they can get approved, and you can move forward with those while we're trying to come up with a master plan.
Good suggestion.
Sounds good. Okay, motion been made, it's been seconded?
No.
Any further discussion?
What motion?
Huh?
What motion? His?
No, John made a motion.
Oh, that motion?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that motion.
And it was seconded by Bob?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Okay. The item number 15E, and this has to do with the new police officer, I think, I believe the issue is, is that we have a moratorium on expanding personnel, and they're asking for a request to, for approval to add an officer.
I'll make a motion, we let them add the other officer.
Motion made by John, seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, closed session. In accordance with GS 143-318-11, tell you what, rather than me read it, why don't somebody just make the motion?
Okay. I make a motion, in accordance with General Statute 143-318.11A6, for the purpose of discussing personnel matters concerning applicants for the Town Manager position, and in accordance with GS 143-318.11A3, for attorney-client privilege to discuss litigation between the town of Lake Lure and Eisenbrow, Self, Jones, Ed Al, that we go into closed session.
Okay, may I make one suggestion, is that because I had multiple phone calls today, that we discussed Lucy Hodge, get an update on Lucy Hodge while we're in the client attorney privilege.
Can, can we do that, Chris, update on Lucy Hodge while we're in there? An update on Lucy Hodge?
Yeah, true, you took a half a day to that.
Yeah, add that, okay.
It's just, it just plus Lucy Hodge at the end of the-
Okay. Plus Lucy Hodge situation under attorney-client privilege.
Okay. All right. I guess I'm gonna take a second.
Man, that's a long one.
Who added all this stuff for my family?
That's a long one. That's yours.
Who said five fifteen minutes?
You don't give a minute. I've got enough paper, man.